Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals on May 23rd. We call a meeting to order at 7:00. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, I must announce anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide his or her name and address for the record. Yes? Thank you. We inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made a part of the record of the meeting, and the original or a copy must be submitted to the committee before there will be any discussion regarding a document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts, and simulation, video presentations, and the like, as well as letters and written materials. First on our agenda tonight is acceptance of the minutes of April 25th, 2022. Everybody had a chance to see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 25th, 2022.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our first public hearing tonight is David and Danielle Antico special permit under 300 4.4B to allow for the alteration of a non-conforming, single-family structure. The applicant is proposing a 36 by 22 addition that will result in more than 20% increase in the gross floor area of the structure. The property is located at 276 Piper Road in the Residence A1 zoning district. Someone here to present?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Sean Powers. Thank you for hearing us tonight. As the chairman just recited, we are in front of you today seeking a special permit for the property located at 276 Piper Road, West Springfield. I'm here with the petitioners, David and Danielle Antico. This property is in RA1 zone, and because of our request, we are subject to Section 300 4.4, and unfortunately, we are not by rights, so therefore subsection B is what kicks into play. With that, there was one change that we'd like to make on the plans. We do have some larger plans for you tonight. We do understand that we are creating an addition that does fall into the 40-foot setback from Piper Road, but the plan in front of you here has the hatchway on the right side or the left side, if you're looking at the property, on Duke Street, which falls into that 20-foot setback. We are, and I did discuss moving that to the back of the property, so we don't fall into the side setback on Duke Street. However, with that being said, it is our belief, and we hope that the board agrees with us tonight, that the proposed addition does not create a new conformity, just a continuing use of the pre-existing non-conformity, non-conforming structure that's currently sitting on the parcel. We do believe that the addition does enhance the general character and the quality of the neighborhood. In addition, we do find it to be consistent with the architectural design of the abutting properties and surrounding neighborhood, and we do believe that with the current parking, adequate parking will still be available. We're only increasing the floor plan of the home, and therefore, we don't find it to be more detrimental to the neighborhood, and we're hoping that you agree with us tonight in that request. And I do have the petitioners here, if you have any questions for us. And I guess if I can step back for a minute, what I just explained about moving the hatchway, if you do agree with us and do allow and approve our petition tonight, I would just like to make a condition upon us providing a new plan for you with that hatchway moved to the back of the property, or the back of the new addition, I should say.
Okay, so my only question is, you stated that there's no new non-conformities. On the side setback, there is no new non-conformity to the side setback?
If we were to bring that hatchway, if we were to bring that hatchway from the side to the back of the property, I believe it still allows that 20-foot setback to be there. I believe the house falls right up against.
Okay.
But I do not think it encroaches.
And a question to Allison. With this addition, if it was approved, does it create a new non-conformity for lot coverage?
No. So the only potential non-conformity was the hatchway, which the building commissioner flagged, and it was agreed that it would be moved to the rear yard. So we knew about that, and I figured it would just be a condition, since the updated plans weren't provided. But as far as building coverage, it does not create any new non-conformities there. The lot size itself is non-conforming by just a, it's 20,000 square feet is required. It has 17,786, so it's just slightly smaller than what's required, but the building coverage is not an issue.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Anything from the audience? Anybody have any comments or questions? Anything further from the petitioner?
None, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Excuse me, second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Just give us a couple of minutes. I don't see a problem.
I don't either. The only thing I had a question or concern about, and I went and checked it on my way here, was sightline when you pulled down Duke Street to pull out on a Piper Road, but that's a non-issue.
With that, there was something from the fire department, which I apologize for not bringing forward in the public hearing, but if the, it would have to go through building department anyways. If it is brought up that it is a significant remodel or rehab, which I don't think this will fall into, do you, Allison?
Honestly, I'm not clear on that, but it would be resolved during the building permit process, because it is based upon, I think, costs and building code and fire code, so...
So it would have to be, if it is considered significant, it'll have to be brought up to, also have to be brought up to code, but that's something in the building on that there. I'll have to reopen the public hearing. It's my mistake, so I will make a motion to reopen the public hearing, if you want to speak to that. I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. They are, the smoke detectors currently are all hardwired, so if that's the concern of the fire department...
The fire department, and I apologize for not bringing it up in the public hearing, is that they just made a statement that if this is deemed by the building department as a significant rehab, the house will have to be brought up to code. So I just want to make the petitioner aware of that and bring it back up in an open hearing, so that that can be notified to you. Again, you can, that'll have, as Allison said, this will come up at the building permit time, and then the applicant, if they do have to bring it up at code and there's significant cost, they can make the determination not to go forward at that point, so...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything further from the audience or petitioner? Seeing none, I'll make a motion again to close the public hearing.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I apologize to the board and to the petitioners for not bringing that up earlier. So again, I don't have a problem with this special permit with the condition that a plan be submitted for the hatch to be in the rear. Anybody else have questions or comments?
No.
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 Okay. So then with that, I will make a motion for the property located at 276 Piper Road to allow a special permit under 300 4.4B to allow for the alteration of the non-conforming, single-family structure to allow a 36 by 22 addition that will result in more than a 20% increase in the gross floor area. The structure will have non-conformity and setback, will not in the RA1 zoning district. Proposal of the addition for the pre-existing non-conformity will not create any new non-conformities. The proposed alteration for the use in pre-existing will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. With that, there'll be two conditions that the building department will make a determination that it is not a significant rehab, and that the petitioner will submit a new plan showing the hatchway in the rear of the, excuse me, of the addition. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck. Our next hearing is Crest Pub, Inc., variance from 300 Table 61C, Table of Area Regulations, which requires a side yard setback of 10 feet in the Business A zoning district. The applicant is proposing a 40 by 24 pavilion addition to the back of the existing structure and an eight-foot side setback. The property is located at 706 Westfield Street in the BA and Residence B zoning districts. Someone here to present?
Good evening. I'm Ken Marier from Crest Pub. We're looking to fill this space with a building between the pavilion and the existing building in order to meet code for additional restrooms that are going to be required for increased occupancy, so we're just looking for a side setback of, you know, two feet variance, be able to do that.
Just a question. This is for restroom areas?
It is.
And they'll be handicap accessible?
They will.
Okay.
There'll be two of them handicap accessible, and it was overlooked during when we put our first variance in for the pavilion, and then it didn't come up afterwards that we needed additional restrooms to meet code, so...
Any questions from the board?
I have one. The previous variance, which was granted in September of 2021, was for a two-season tent, no temporary or permanent sides.
It wasn't for a tent, it was for a har, it was for...
Well, it was, yeah, for the...
For a pavilion.
Yes. Understood. But upon a site visit, it appears there's anchor bolts all the way around the perimeter of the pore, which would lead me to believe that permanent walls were going to be installed.
Well, at this point, that was, it was done that way, so in the future, because we didn't know what the ordinance was, I guess you guys are working on, or are just going to be working on, or, excuse me, in ordinance to determine whether sides could be put on or not, and if they could be put on, we're going to need a sill plate, and we need a sill plate anyway. So when they did the pore, they put the anchor bolts in all the way around, so that could be done, so there will be a sill plate all the way around. And we, I think the ABCC is going to require us to have some kind of border around the, you know, the outsides of that to keep the people inside of it. It's either got to be fenced or a knee wall, but the rest of it will be open.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the board?
I have none.
I have none.
So you are not looking for any changes to the variance on the pavilion at this point, other than the addition of the restrooms?
Well, we want to fill that space in between, but I think we also need to talk about either, I got to put a, you know, fencing or a knee wall along those sides in order to keep whoever's in there in there, because we are serving alcohol, so ABC told me that we need to have either fencing or something to designate where that area we can serve is.
So...
So I think it would make sense to put a knee wall in there, just as a barrier, so people can't walk off to the side and into the parking lot. Once they're inside the pavilion, they're inside.
Okay. So because it's listed as the pavilion in the variance, we can address that tonight through the board, because that is a change from the original variance that was granted to the Crest Pub. Is that what you were concerned about, Reed?
Somewhat.
Okay. Seeing that there's no further questions from the board, I'll ask this time, is there anything from planning?
We did get a comment from the Health Department, just wanting to recommend that plumbing work that's being done is linked to the facility's plan for the use of the pavilion, and some question about the need for a three-bay sink and a hand sink with hot and cold running water and a cross connection in the pavilion, I think in anticipation of possibly the bar facility or if food is to be prepared outside. So just, I think they're asking you to plan ahead.
I talked to the Health Department, and we will be putting, I guess we can serve beer out there, so we're going to put taps out there, soda. There'll be no food process out there, and we will have three-bay sink as well as hand-wash sink out there.
In the open area or in the area where the enclosure is for the bathrooms and so forth?
On one end of the pavilion area. There'll be a bar there and one end of it. Gable end of it.
Okay.
The end that's attached to where the bathrooms will be.
Okay. Further comment or questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the audience. Anybody have comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. John Wees, 698 Westfield Street. My wife and I own the building right next door, and we own Orangebee Insurance Agency. Ken and John have been great neighbors since they purchased the Crest. That setback is going to be on our property line. I have no problem with it whatsoever. They do everything correctly. They do it, they overbuild. They're wonderful neighbors, and I would hope that the appeal is granted, and then actually, I would love them to get fixed walls there, too. It's just a good location. They can use my parking lot if they want for overflow, so if you want to enter that into the records, I'm okay with that as well. I'll put that in writing if need be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions from the audience? Seeing none. This was a four-member board, so before I continue, I just want to make it known to the petitioner that any approval for the variance would have to be a fully unanimous vote by the board. Is there any questions from the petitioner, or would the petitioner like us to continue at this point? You have no problem with that? Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just give us a couple of minutes. Thoughts? As far as the variance, it's already been determined of the hardship on the variance, on the previous variance that was granted, so I guess we're looking at the two-foot, because it's a little change on the two-foot setback at this point.
Yeah, the setback is, for this bathroom addition, is the same as it was for the pavilion, so I don't really see an issue here.
Okay. Are we keeping the same stipulations of the previous variance that was granted, meaning no walls, no structures, enclosing the pavilion?
Yeah, no. I mean, it's a seasonal pavilion. I mean, that was the premise that the first variance was granted, and I mean, I understand that, you know, the Licensing Commission will probably have some sort of a fencing requirement or something, so that people don't go off into the parking lot with drinks and stuff. I mean, I don't have an issue with a railing, or as he indicated, perhaps a knee wall, whatever is cost-effective to keep people from, you know, breaking the rules here, but not, this is not supposed to be a four-season facility.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, I think we ought to write that in as one of the conditions, that it could either be a knee wall or a fence, and it's not to be a fully enclosed pavilion.
Okay.
I have no further comments. I'm okay with that.
Okay. I'm not going to put in, into the motion as a condition, a knee wall or something like that. That way there, it leaves it open to whatever ABCC or the License Commission does, but I will put in there that no permanent structures for sidewalls and/or temporary structures for sidewalls be put in, if the board is okay with that condition.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay. All right. Then with that, I'm going to...
I'm sorry, I would just clarify that it's not a full, no permanent or temporary full sidewalls.
Correct.
Because the knee wall is still a sidewall, so I don't want to preclude them from being able to do that.
So we'll just state it as a full wall?
Yeah, I would just clarify that it's for...
Yeah, full height would be the...
Okay. Thank you, Allison. I appreciate that. Okay, with that, I'm going to make a motion to variance of 300 Table 61C, Table of Area Regulations in the Business A zoning district, to allow a 40 by 24-foot pavilion to the back of the existing structure with an eight-foot side setback, being a two-foot side setback, and the property is located at 706 Westfield Street in the Business A Residence B zoning districts. Excuse me. This is due to the shape of the property, that the building would not be allowed without the two-foot side setback. This is, relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and the variance allowing the two-foot side setback is based, would not nullify or derogate from the existing ordinance is of the town of West Springfield. With that, we condition that no permanent full sidewalls or temporary full sidewalls be installed on the structure at 706 Westfield Street in the pavilion area. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck. Okay. Our third hearing tonight is Century Center, variance from 300 9.2 Table 9A4A, which provides for a maximum area of 50 square feet in the Business A zoning district, and 300 92C6, which permits a maximum sign supporting structure of 25 feet. The applicant is proposing a new 100-square-foot sign with a 46.6-foot supporting structure at the Century Plaza, Century Center, excuse me, shopping plaza entrance at the intersection of Brezhner Hand Street and Memorial Avenue. The subject property is located at 219-465 Memorial Avenue in the Business A zoning district. Someone here to present? Yes, sir. Before you continue, this will, again, will be a four-member board, and any approval for a variance has to be unanimous. Okay?
Hi, my name is Andy Cohen. I've been with Century Investment Company that manages and owns the shopping center since 1952. We're here to look for a variance for replacement of a sign that in June 2021, which is the sign that was near McDonald's, that was approved of when that went up, that was 100 square feet, that was basically damaged beyond repair by a vehicle, a truck that ran into it during the night, I guess, and totally ruined the sign. We're looking to put up a 100-square-foot sign to replace the 100-square-foot sign that was there. In doing so, we would like to replace the 100-square-foot sign that is at the main entrance to the center. The one I just spoke about is the one that's closest to McDonald's. So they match, similar to the one that was there previously, that had matched to the main entrance to the center. We have had only two signs there since the center was built in 1952. This would be the third sign, if you approve of it, for a variance. And we're not changing the size. We're still keeping the 100-square-foot availability. We've given you a passout, and just to show you a larger, this is what was there. This is what we're proposing for an update, and that happens to be our neighbor's sign, which is actually almost 200 square feet.
So this is replacing an existing, that...
This was the existing sign that we had at the main entrance, and had also at the entrance where McDonald's is. This is, they were both identical, but this one that at McDonald's was totally damaged by a vehicle that left the road.
And what was the size of the supporting structure on that sign?
What was the... I don't think it's really any different in size.
I guess the question is, was it greater than 25 square feet?
It's, what's the original?
The original is 40 square feet.
The original. I'm sorry?
The original was 40 square feet.
40 square feet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And that was built in what year?
Those signs, I would assume, might be over 20 some odd years old. TJ Maxx went in in 1989, when the sign approval was given then, for the variance.
Okay. Allison, was that before the change of what we have today?
Sorry, I don't know.
Okay.
I would have to do a little research on that.
Okay. Sorry. Questions from the board?
I don't have one.
I have none.
I have none.
Seeing none. Okay. Questions from the audience? Comments from the audience? Yes, sir. You have to come to the mic.
Again, John Wees, if a business owner's sign was damaged, I think he has the right, or that company has a right, to replace that sign with like-kind and quality, even if the zoning might have changed from then to now, but I think the, you know, the board should be concerned about replacing signs that haven't been damaged, that go against whatever's on the town bylaws, so... But if something was damaged, like-kind and quality, it should be replaced, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a question, Allison, why a variance isn't necessary if it's of like-kind? I do see that the structure is changing, that's all.
Sure. So just a couple of clarifying points. The first is that there's two hearings before you, one for each sign. Only one of the signs was damaged, and it was a couple of years ago, the one near McDonald's, and the request is to have a new sign and then to replace the sign that's still standing with a matching sign, so that they're consistent with one another. As far as why the damaged sign cannot be replaced in its same size without a variance, our zoning ordinance sign section has a subsection titled "Nonconforming Signs," and it has three parts. The first is continuance, which states a nonconforming sign... The first is continuance, which states "A nonconforming sign lawfully existing at the time of adoption or subsequent amendment of this ordinance may continue, although such sign does not conform to the provisions of this ordinance." Part two, alterations, "No alterations shall be made to a nonconforming sign unless the nonconforming nature of the sign is brought into conformity with this ordinance. Structural maintenance and repair are allowed." And the last part is three, which is replacement. "Any sign replacing a nonconforming sign shall conform to the provision of this section, and the nonconforming sign shall no longer be displayed," which excludes replacing the faceplate content as long as it does not increase the nonconformity of the sign. So just to summarize it, because this is a full replacement, it's, it's not grandfathered any, any longer. So a sign is allowed, but not, not the size of the sign that's being requested.
Okay, thank you. So then, because it is a variance, I bring this, this question up each time, even though it's just a replacement sign, what is the hardship due to shape, soil, or topography of the land?
Well, it becomes a benefit both to, obviously, ourselves and also shoppers coming down the street, Memorial being a very busy street, with the multiple signs on it, far easier to read or see that there are stores within the center. We'd like to have both signs look alike, just out of a nicer look. This hasn't been changed for over, well, 35 years almost, to update it, make it look a little bit better. I think with competition, it's not asking for any more square footage that is already there, despite other signs on the street that are larger than the ones that we have. We realize the limitation of the 100 square feet based on the existing signs.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board?
I do not have one.
Seeing none. Any comments or questions from the audience? Any last comment from the petitioner?
Nothing, but thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a, a difficult situation. It is a replacement of, of, of an existing sign, but does not come into the conformities of our, of our ordinance. That's why the variance was clarified by Allison. I don't see the, the hardship through shape, soil, or topography in the land or structure...
I, I happen to disagree with that, Chet. This is a very large parcel, and according to this handout that we recently received, it is irregularly shaped.
So then the, the question I, I ask, we, as we can jump that first hurdle of, of the irregularly shaped parcel, how does it create the hardship to allow the 100-square-foot
It's a multi-tenant property. I mean, I realize we have restrictive sign requirements for a reason, and I agree with But they have, I mean, there was a previous variance granted for these 100-square-foot signs, and they are replacing them. The foundation for the one over by McDonald's is mostly there. And there is the visibility issue, you know, but I'm not sure I can answer that question directly.
I'm just looking through the application, and I don't see, and I don't know if Allison can answer this question, I don't see that a previous variance or special permit was granted, just through the application that I'm looking at.
I never saw the application, but, okay.
Do, do you have that answer, Allison, by chance?
I, I don't have a definitive answer, but I, I don't have any knowledge of a previous variance.
Okay. So that's where I'm running it into the, into the problem. Not saying that my mind couldn't be changed. I understand getting over the hurdle with the irregular shape of the property, that's, that's the first hurdle. The second hurdle is, is the hardship, because sign can be built and under the conforming ordinance, that's where I run into the problem. And with the hardship being shape of the parcel, I don't see how we can grant the 100-foot square foot and the 46.6 structure without a previous variance that was not granted. And again, I'm, I'm just looking at the application, and it, and it doesn't state that a variance was granted at this point.
Well, I think going to Reed's point of the, it's a multi-unit building, and the shape really makes it difficult, with the whole frontage or the lack thereof of certain sections, to get that many signs in. So I, I don't think it's a direct correlation of what we need, but I think there's enough of similarities to hardships that could help push it over the edge, especially since it was already an existing sign and almost an act of God that it came down due to unfortunate accident.
I think we also have to look at public detriment, and in this case, being public well-being, on such a large stretch of a parcel, as Joe said, with multi-tenants in there, I think a smaller sign would actually create more traffic issues and safety issues for the people using that road, as opposed to a, a sign that's been there for so long at that shape and structure.
Especially on that curve, get a little bit of a bend.
Could I add one thing that, just to tell Mr. Reed, that the foundation...
I can't, I can't let you do that yet.
Okay.
Just hang on just one second. The petitioner would like to speak to us. With that, we would have to open the public hearing, so I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Two things. One, we did present it to the DPW, to Jay, and he knew about the circumstances, so that's why we're here today on this. Second, when Reed had asked about the foundation, the vehicle, which was a truck, hit it so hard, it ripped the foundation out of the ground. So that has to be replaced also. And you are correct that because of the running footage on Memorial Avenue, we think that it also becomes a benefit to customers driving down the road and being able to see the signs, because there's two large entrances to the center, and it'll give them an idea of what is in the center. Thank you.
Do you know if there ever was a variance granted on these signs?
I don't remember. If a variance was required in '89 or '90, we would have received it, and we would have applied for it and received it.
Okay.
Obviously, they wouldn't have given it to us otherwise.
That, because that, to me, is part of this, and we don't have that answer tonight. Would you be adverse to us looking into the, the variance being granted back when these, these signs were, were built?
If a variance was required at the time, no, not a problem.
Okay. Now I would ask Allison, if we're going to do that, should we continue this public hearing, if we're looking for additional information?
It's up to you. I, I just checked the registry of deeds, and I'm not finding anything, and it is a question that's asked of the applicants before they file, and part of the application, nothing was submitted, so...
Right, okay. Then we're, we're pretty confident that there has been no variance on the sign.
I mean, without the clerk running it, which, again, was part of the application procedure, it's hard to say, but I have not asked that of the clerk myself, so I, I don't, I don't want to make promises that I don't have actual knowledge of. But while I, I have the floor for just a quick second, I just want to make sure everybody's clear that you're voting in two separate hearings on each sign. So this sign is the one that's at the intersection, the signalized intersection, the McDonald's sign is the next hearing, so just, just for clarity's sake.
And the one that we're doing at the signalized, that is the one that was, the structure was damaged?
No.
No.
The one at McDonald's is the one that was damaged.
Okay.
Yeah, this sign is still standing.
Anything further from the board during the public hearing?
No.
Anything further from the applicant?
No, sir. Just that the signs had been there for, one had been there for at least 32 years, and the other probably longer.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing once again.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Give us a couple minutes.
Given to the specifics of this one, they are replacing in kind, and it is an irregularly shaped parcel.
Gentlemen?
I, I agree. I don't see an issue with this, where it's, they're not asking for a larger sign size. I understand the base is larger, it was already a nonconforming base, so it's, it's marginally larger, nonconforming, but I don't see an issue with it.
Okay.
And this is also the one that the DPW said that there was no problem with the sidewalk reconstruction or whatever.
It's the next one.
Oh, it's the next one?
Yeah.
All right, my bad.
That's okay. I'm still having a hard time, especially with the structure not being a damaged structure at this point. It's just a, a replacement for aesthetic purposes. I won't put anybody on the spot to, to set the approvals. It sounds like the board wants to do an approval on the variance, so I won't put anybody on the spot to make the motion. So I'll make the motion, if I can find my paperwork, I'm sorry, to approve the variance for Century Center, variance from 300 9.2 table 94A, which provides for a maximum sign area of 50 feet, and allow, this variance would allow a, a 100-foot structure for the sign in the Business A zoning district, and 300 92C6, which provides for a maximum sign supporting structure area of 25 feet. The applicant is looking for a 46.6-square-foot supporting structure at the Century Center Shopping Plaza entrance intersection of Resnahan and Memorial Avenue. The property is located at 219-465 Memorial Avenue in the Business A zoning district. This would be owing to the condition of the shape of the property, and would not be a detriment to the public good. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one, one opposed. I'm sorry, your application's been denied. Our next hearing is, again, Century Center. Again, I'll note that this has to be unanimous board approval. This is a variance from 300 9.2 table 94A, which provides for a maximum sign area of 50 square feet in the Business A zoning district, and 300 9.2C6, which provides for a maximum sign supporting structure area of 25 square feet. The applicant is proposing a 100-square-foot sign with a 46.6-square-foot supporting structure at the westerly entrance of the Century Center Shopping Plaza. The property is located at 219-465 Memorial Avenue in the Business A zoning district. Yes, sir?
Andy Cohen, the sign, the first one was for the main entrance sign that you just voted on. This one is for the one that was run over by the truck that left the highway and totally damaged the sign, ripped up the base to it, and we are looking to put back up what was there previously, which was a 100-square-foot sign that had been there for roughly 32, 35 years, 100 square feet, not larger than what was there before.
And I had a question. Would the applicant consider doing similar sign structure of what was there previously?
In design?
In design, yes.
We would like to enhance it and do something similar to that, rather than something like this, and furthermore, the names have changed, models left.
I understand.
Yes.
Yeah, understanding on that.
We would like to update the sign, rather than to, unless we're allowed something like this, which I thought exceeded the zoning.
It does.
And that's 200 square feet. We're looking for half of that.
Okay.
And I would very much like to update the signs.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have none.
It's, we find it to be a hardship in getting tenants. It seems today, tenants which are very hard to come by to begin with, all like to have recognition, recognition on the road, because that's probably the main recognition they can get. We're limited to signage on the building itself, which, as Reed commented, that, you know, with people driving by quickly, they look, they, it's tough to see a sign from the, the street as they drive. Far easier to see it on the sign.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything from planning?
So the DPW did reach out because of the Memorial Ave. project, the, the full depth reconstruction of the roadway and, and some changes to the traffic pattern, striping, signals, so on and so forth. As part of that, they're taking temporary and permanent easements along the edges of the right-of-way for construction work, the installation of utilities, work on sidewalks, and part of that easement does cover the area where the sign would be, but it, it, there's, there won't be any interference. So the DPW just wanted to make clear that they have no concern about the sign and their ability to do what they need to do.
You're talking just about the easements?
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's a maintenance, it's, yeah, it's all, I have the full comment, it's kind of lengthy, but the, the gist of it is that they, they're not concerned.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything further from the applicant?
No, sir.
Anything from the audience? Further comment, questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll try this again. We'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just give us a moment. This one I have a, a little difference of opinion on. I take into heart the hardship, this has a dual hardship. One is financial, but one is for the shape of the property, as we know, can't just be financial, so Reed has brought up the, the point that it is an irregular shape on the property. on the property. And this is a replacement sign. So I have a little difference of opinion on this one, as I did from the last one. Anybody have further comments on this?
No.
Seeing none, then I will make a motion to approve the variance at Century Center, variance from three hundred nine point two, table nine four A, which provides for a maximum sign area of fifty feet. The variance will allow for a hundred square foot sign in the business A zoning district and the three hundred nine point two C six, which provides for a max, maximum sign support structure of twenty-five square feet. The applicant is looking for a forty-six point six square foot, so the variance would allow for the forty-six point six square foot supporting structure at, in the business A zoning district at two nineteen four sixty-five Memorial Avenue. This is owing to the condition of the shape of the property being an irregular shape and size of the property and hardship also being a financial hardship for attaining tenants. Desirable relief can be granted without substantial derogation from the ordinance and is not detrimental to the public good. The variance will allow, as I said, the hundred square foot sign and the forty-six point six square foot structure. This will not, this will also not interfere with the easements of the DPW in the town of West Springfield. Is there a second?
Second.
Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good luck, Jim.
Thank you.
Our, our last hearing is the Pro Casanti Group, variance from three hundred thirteen point eight, table thirteen one, which requires an eight-foot minimum depth in landscape buffer. We've, we're still, we're still withdrawing that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're looking at three hundred nine point two G, table nine four A, which requires freestanding signs to be no more than fifty square feet in size and no more than twenty-five feet in height in the business A zoning district. Three hundred nine point two, table nine three D, which states that the maximum allowable changeable copy sign area is thirty-seven point five square feet. And three hundred nine two C six, which states that the maximum allowable sign installation of twenty-five square feet. The applicant seeking relief to allow for installation of a hundred thirty-four point six square foot sign, twenty-seven foot high freestanding sign with sixty-two point one one square feet of electronic changeable copy area and a one hundred and forty-five point four six square foot supporting structure, all in the association with the proposed construction of a new fifty-eight thirteen square foot marketplace and gas station and twelve filling fuel positions at the property located at fifteen oh six Riverdale Street in the business A zoning district. This is continued from April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Yes, sir?
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of the applicant, as the chair mentioned, for sign variance. We had, at the last meeting, requested a withdrawal and I think the board had accepted the withdrawal of the landscape buffer. I don't know if you had the opportunity, I don't know if the planner was able to send off to you an email that we just sent to her late this afternoon, but I've got eleven by seventeens that I can pass out if it's okay with the board.
Please. Just to make you aware and the public aware, this is a full board. There, for an approval, you would need, one dissenting vote is okay on this board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Pleased about that. Okay, so we were here, April twenty-fifth. We had, we thought was a very good conversation. We left with some direction. You know, it was a discussion about hardship. There was a discussion about can you put a compliant sign? And so what we did was, we went back, we took a look, we talked to our traffic engineer to try to determine if we could comply. And the answer is no, we can't comply. And frankly, if, if the sign variance isn't granted, the project probably doesn't go forward. You may remember the initial plan that we had proposed. There were a couple of curb cuts on Riverdale. The most recent plan that you had received at the beginning of last meeting is the plan that we would go forward with, where it's a four-way intersection. So now there's three legs to that intersection. The proposed plan would have a fourth leg going into the site, really split between the Super Eight Motel and right now the restaurant, but hopefully soon to be the food and energy market. So what you've got on the screen in front of you, what you have in front of you is a Google Street View image of what that intersection and site look like now. You can see the vegetation. You can see the existing Super Eight Motel sign, utility signage, et cetera. What I'll do is I will flip to proposed conditions to show what it would look like with the sign and with the, the gas station and most notably with that additional leg. So if you're looking, you can see, and if you're looking at the screen, you can see where the mouse is right now. You've got that additional leg for, for the intersection. So this is, it's a little bit unique because this site will have one entrance for two uses. One of the other things you should have received in your packet, hopefully, an image traveling northerly. And as you're traveling northerly, there is a lot of what we would consider sign clutter, including the existing Super Eight Motel sign. So one of the things that you'll see as I go back to the future conditions or the proposed conditions is that that sign no longer exists because it is being combined with the proposed pylon sign. So the proposal from last time was a twenty-seven foot sign, a hundred and thirty-four point six square feet. This sign is that exact same size, but it incorporates that Super Eight Motel sign. So it's actually getting rid of that Super Eight Motel sign and combining it with this freestanding pylon sign. So what we had done is we talked to our traffic engineer and we said, you know, take a look at the speed of vehicles on the surrounding roadway, look at the configuration, the number of lanes and what the motoring public would do. And it's, it's a forty mile per hour zone and hopefully you've received the letter from McMahon Associates, our, our traffic engineer. And similar to what we had heard just during the last hearing, it's, it's a safety issue. Not only are two lots being combined and having one entrance, two uses essentially being combined and having one sign at this southerly portion. Traveling public is going to have to figure out how to get, for that one time, into the site. It's not one of those sites that has three entrances, four entrances, or even two entrances. It's, it's got one entrance. And so what we want to do is to make sure that the motoring public, whether they're traveling from the north, I'll show you an image from the north. So this is existing conditions from the north. You can see how the roadway curves, I'd say slightly to the southwest around that bend. And so it's important for those vehicles traveling southerly to be able to see that this is a, a gas station and convenience store and really what the gas prices are. So seventy-five percent of vehicle trips for a use like this are pass-by trips. And that just means people don't necessarily set out and say, I'm going to Neon Marketplace, unfortunately. It's really people already on the road going somewhere else, five guys, what have you, say, oh geez, the price here is, you know, and I think in the rendering we might have two dollars and forty-seven cents, which everybody knows it's probably triple. We probably have to get a wider sign to add the double digits, but that's another conversation for another day. So, you know, this is for the discerning consumer and so instead of having a smaller sign where the motoring public would have to slow down, potentially cause traffic issues, or if they're in the left lane, say, oh wow, that's a great price, let me switch over to the right lane, they're alerted long enough before they have to make that decision at, at that turning to get into the site. And so something similar happens coming from the south. And so this is, I don't think we have any, I don't see any from the south on here, but we can still talk through it. So this is, this is an aerial? Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, so, and even imagine yourself, I mean, you've probably all been on this roadway plenty of times. If you're traveling from the south, heading north, you also have to make a decision, especially if you want to get into the left lane to take that left turn into the site. And you can imagine a car, you know, and it works twofold. Do you imagine a car in the right lane traveling and saying, oh my, I'd like to get gas there? They need to be able to know soon enough, A, that there's a gas station there, B, that it is, here's the, the price of the gas that's being offered, so they can then change into the left lane. What it also does, I think, subliminally to those other folks is whether you're traveling south on the northerly side or traveling northerly from the southerly side, other people who are all drivers understand that as they're approaching an intersection like this with a use like this, vehicles may be trying to get over to access that. And so it's not only the vehicle that is actually accessing it, it's those other folks who are kind of the bystanders, making sure that they understand that there is a gas station use here and so that the motoring public may be slowing down and, and taking certain, taking certain turning maneuvers to get into that site. And there's also the motel here. So I know we were talking about multi-tenant sites before. This isn't strictly a multi-tenant site, but it, it functionally is a multi-tenant site because there is that one access there, which is, I think, a distinguishing characteristic. So, you know, we, we thought that even though it's bigger than what the bylaw or the ordinance requires, we, we went back, we took a hard look and we think because of the, the shape of the lot, and it's almost the shape of the lots because you've got that Super Eight Motel lot, which is more of a pork chop, if you will, along with the, the safety hardship, really. And the discussion with our client that if they can't get a sign like this, the project probably doesn't go forward because it does pose a risk that they just don't want to be responsible for. So I think when you put those things together, even though the, the sign is the same size as we had proposed before, you know, we think that it is, it, it doesn't substantially derogate from the purpose or intent of the bylaw and it probably is for, for the public good. So, you know, we have some examples of other Google Street Views, if you'd like to see, but I'm sure you're all familiar with this area and, and the signage that you have on Riverdale.
So I have a question on the new structure, kind of superimposing it to the old structure. Does it come further out to Route Five? The mark, does the marketplace come out further to Route Five than the existing structure?
It, I do not believe so. And I will get to, this is probably a good image of it.
Yeah.
Right? So you see kind of the, and if you've ever been there, you know how close it is to the back of the sidewalk?
Sure.
And I mean, it's.
What, what I'm looking at is, is the new structure of the marketplace as, as compared to the old structure with the old sign, which you, you don't have a picture of. And that's, that's fine. I understand that. But your concern is, is the safety. That's why I'm asking if the marketplace comes out closer, if the existing sign can be u, not utilized because you want to update it, I understand that, it would stay within the confines, but would take away the concerns of, of the safety and the U-turn as, as you're talking about.
Sure. So this is, this is from the north looking south. And I think this gives you the best perspective of the proximity of the existing building to the roadway. And you can also see the existing sign, which I would imagine does not comply with the, the front yard setback. So this is what's existing from the north. And then I'll scroll down and you can see how the building has been shifted back again for safety purposes and for compliance with the ordinance. And we're able to fit in that landscape buffer as required. But I think it's still, and so then you can see somewhat clearly here, the sign. And the intent is that you can see the offerings of the site, particularly gas and diesel. And then it'll be that, that Super Eight, which is at the bottom of that new freestanding pylon sign. So we've, we've moved the building back, again, because of safety. If we wanted to keep it up, we'd be talking pre-existing non-conformity, which we're not even trying to do. We tried to comply with whatever we could comply with.
And does the new marketplace own the property of the Super Eight Motel?
They do not.
Does the owners with this proposal have the written consent of, of the Super Eight Motel being incorporated into that sign?
We could get you the written consent if you wanted to, but yes. We certainly had the conversation with them before we.
Yeah, I'm sure you did, yeah.
They're actually the owners of this site, of the one that the marketplace is going to be on. And so it's under agreement to be acquired from the owner of that Super Eight Motel. And so it was through, because again, to reduce that sign clutter and really what we think is to make a really much improved intersection there that was, in hearing what the board had said last time, we thought it was important to remove that Super Eight Motel sign on that southerly side of the site.
Questions from the board?
Are both of the Super Eight signs coming down?
Great question. And I believe the answer is no, that northerly one. The owner was pretty steadfast that it will need to remain. So we, we got rid of one, which, and we think we got rid of the more important one, at least for sign decluttering, so-called.
And is it deemed or viewed essential that this sign have the advertisement about pizzas and premium cafes?
It, it is. Yeah, we had that discussion. You know, we tried to pare down whatever we could to only get what's essential. We didn't want to come back and, you know, blow smoke. And so that's, that is, because it's one of the unique features of this marketplace that you don't traditionally find. So it, it was an essential piece when we talked to our client.
Further questions from the board? Just bringing up the sore subject from the last meeting, hardship.
Sure.
Just you.
I won't say the F-word anymore, I promise. Yeah, so, you know, we looked at it and so it's, it's the shape of the lot which is causing, if we have to comply with literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance, it would be a safety issue. And we think that, that it's that safety issue that is forming the basis for that hardship because, you know, this applicant wouldn't want to, and, and I think you wouldn't be able to make any of the other findings that you would need to if this was a, a safety issue. And so, you know, we can imagine, or the client can imagine a scenario where there are accidents, rear end, issues with folks trying to make turns, et cetera, such that a smaller sign would likely promote it. And again, and such to the point that I don't know that they would go forward if a sign this size wasn't approved, because I think they believe so strongly about the safety issue that would be caused with a smaller sign, so.
But again, going back to one of the board members' questions, maybe getting rid of the pizza or something like that, that's not something that the applicant wants to do because they feel that it's most important to the business that you're bringing forward.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I want to be careful when, when we're talking about, you know, importance of the building, business, because it can start to sound like financial, but I think it's.
Well, financial can be a hardship.
Totally.
But, but it can't be the sole hardship.
The sole, yeah. Yeah, and I, I mean, I would hate to, and now I'm probably off-script, but I would hate to see this project, because I don't know how often you're going to get somebody who's going to come in and say, here's what we're looking to do. We're looking to work with DOT. We're looking to revitalize this property that, you know, it's been, pick a number of different, you know, uses, restaurant, but Piccadilly Pub and then others. I think there's a great opportunity here, so I don't want to throw it out the window. So if the board is saying, you know, we'll approve it if you get rid of this one piece of it, will my client say, nope, we need that or else? You know, I, I don't know. But I just don't want to see, frankly, a denial here for something that either the board could live with or our, our clients could live with. So I guess we would ask for what's shown as approved because we, they do think that it is an essential piece of their business. But I would hate to see that as a reason for denial.
Okay. Further questions from the board? Seeing none. Anything from the audience? Anything from planning? Any last comments from the petitioner?
Please.
Okay. With that, I'll make a motion. With that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Give us a couple minutes. Your thoughts?
From my perspective, the shape is not a hardship. It's flat, and it's roughly rectangular. I don't agree with the safety issue, and it's going to be a four-way signalized intersection by the time this is done with DPW or with the state highway. I think the thing is too big, and I think it can definitely be smaller and still be more in compliance. I mean, we just had one in front of us that was for a multi-tenant plaza that was a hundred square feet. And we just went through a similar situation not all that long ago with the Pride Station, with the drive-through and food and whatnot. And I don't have my notes, but I believe his variance request...
There was, there was no variance on that sign.
There wasn't. Okay, so...
He's in compliance.
There he goes.
Andy?
I tend to agree with Reed on this one, and, you know, this is basically the same sign they came in with last time without any major changes that would change us to come at least close to compliance.
And I don't do this very often, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, the applicant did come back with one of the stipulations that we brought up, which was hardship. He brought in different parameters for hardship. But again, not really to shape soil or topography of the land. He did bring up shape, but as Reed has said, I agree with Reed, it's basically a rectangular shape, so it's not an irregular shape. So I've played both sides of it and brought out both sides, so I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sir, I disagree a little bit. I do think that little jog on the corner makes this an awkward space. I don't know if the size of the sign is the right size for that property or not. I do think, as I stated in previous cases, I think the public wellness and, let's be honest, it's a forty mile an hour zone, nobody goes forty miles an hour through there. I do think it's a safety issue. I don't know if a smaller sign would be sufficient to show and get people's attention in enough time coming from the north.
Okay. And Joe?
Well, I think to me, the intriguing part is if it's going to be a multi-tenant sign. I mean, you're basically decluttering the signs, as the attorney said. So I'd want to know, I guess, how big is a Motel Eight sign? Is that shrink the sign in a way, since there's two, two different tenants, two different parcels? I know it's the same ownership on the sign. I would lean, I mean, towards Mike's comment about, I do think there is a little bit of irregularity there. I don't know if the size is the right sign, again, for that, but I do think this is a scenario where there should be a larger sign due to the speed of that corner, the bend. You know, I'd be more inclined to have more discussions on approval with restrictions as far as the actual use of the tenant going in there. You know, I do think having a gas station that's also a cafe and a building in the back should have some leniency. I don't know what the correct size would be. You know, to Reed's point, it is substantially larger than the previous person's proposal. But I do understand that you need to see the gas signs. I used to live around that corner. I've been there probably a thousand times, probably ten thousand times. I mean, it does come up quick. I do think it's an improvement to what's there now, and I do think a larger sign is needed. I don't have the answer on the actual size, but I do like the fact that it's eliminating another sign, condensing it. I do think it's a far outside area as far as the shape goes, but I do think you could, you know, hang your hat on some irregularity with that entryway into it, kind of coming in at an angle. And the parcel in the back, which I know is not in front of us, but it's the same owner, you know, definitely has a funky shape to it.
But that's a separate parcel.
Separate parcel.
Yeah. Just to make it clear. Okay. So... I'll disagree on the safety factor, because I believe that a smaller sign could be utilized, although not making the applicant quite happy. But I will go forward and make a motion for approval. Just for the audience, the approval will require four members to be in the affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, I know you need to open, if I'm going to speak, you have to open up the public hearing. I don't know if you'd like to do that, and we could maybe further this discussion a little bit?
That's going to be up to the board.
Please, it's the board.
I'll put it up to the board. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. I would need a second, and then I would need four members to vote yes to reopen the public hearing. So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you can speak. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You know, so I think we're hearing some good feedback, and I don't want to prolong it anymore. I don't know that I have the four votes, frankly, that I need. I think as I'm reading, I probably have two, and I think I need two more, and I'm not sure that I get there. One point of clarification, this wouldn't be a four-way intersection. This would still, so that, this piece that you see right here would only come into existence because of this project. So it would be the same three legs with the same, and I'll probably scroll back up so you can see, refresh your memory, what exists there now, that would continue to exist. So there's nothing in the DOT plans that are out there that would include what we're asking for it to, what we're asking to happen, we're the ones asking for it to happen with DOT. So just, so you know that this is, it's something that's being created really for this project. So, that all said, hearing that it's maybe something under one thirty-six, I don't know if you've got, if you would be willing to continue it, because I really don't want to walk away with the denial.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I never liked to say that we wouldn't continue hearing.
Yeah.
But that was the purpose of continuing the hearing, and I asked you in the last hearing, would you be prepared in May? And in your testimony tonight, you basically said, it's all or nothing. If we can't have this, they won't go forward with the project. So...
That just hurts.
I'm a little frustrated, to be honest.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
So I can make a motion for a continuance. I would be in the negative at this point.
Okay.
Only because of past at this point.
And I'm not trying to play coy. We didn't come here and say, oh, by all means, but I'm just...
And I'm not saying that.
You know, I'm hearing what we're hearing, and it, I mean, I think this is a good project. I think it's a good project for the area. I don't want to see the clients walk away because of signage. I want to try to figure out something. I don't think, I don't know if there's more guidance that the board could give. I mean, I heard you say a hundred square feet because of the last one, maybe that's. Want to go back and say, because then it's tantamount to a denial if we say, no, we can't do a hundred square feet.
But that's what we were looking for from the past meeting. That's why I'm frustrated.
Sure, sure. And I think, and so what we had done was, and sometimes with clients, it takes a couple of times, and what we had done was that, getting rid of that Super Eight Motel sign and adding it to this sign. And so we did reduce it by, and I don't know how many square feet that is, and I probably should know, but that's, that's the change that was made. We thought it was a positive change, reducing the sign clutter. If what we're hearing is it's still too large, which I think I've heard, and I heard, we don't know what that is, you know, I don't know if you're the type of board that wants to give guidance, if it's a hundred square feet, if you're saying, Tom, no, it's seventy-five square feet or nothing, or it's fifty square feet or nothing. I just, I don't want to waste your time, I don't want to waste the client's time, I want to figure out if there's, and I'm a lover, not a fighter, so I'm trying to figure out what that middle ground is.
What I can say is if members of the board that are saying that you need a larger sign, want to make some type of announcement of what they feel is right, we'll certainly open that up to the board in public hearing. But that doesn't mean that the rest of the board is in agreement with that. So we could continue, you could do the work of, I'm just going to use a number of sixty feet, okay? Just to be creative.
Yeah.
Okay? And you could come back, and the board still say, no, it's still not in compliance, we still don't feel that it meets hardship and so forth. So you could still be denied.
Sure.
So just want you to understand that. If that's what you'd like me to ask the board, I'd be happy to do that.
If you could, please, Mr. Chair.
Of the, of the, any of the members like to venture something to the petitioner of a size that they feel that might be beneficial to the town and come under the guidelines of variance, that's the main thing. Beneficial to the town really doesn't matter, it's guidelines of variance that we have to meet.
I mean, this place is virtually the same as the Pride Station.
Which, if I may, which Pride Station?
The Pride Station that's at the end of, what is it, North Elm Street? North Elm Street, there's all like a Wendy's?
I think it has like three, four curb cuts. So it's...
No, it has one curb cut going in.
It looks like I'm seeing two.
Has an entrance and an exit. I don't know if you consider that two curb cuts, but has an entrance and an exit.
But I mean, the signage is, it's the same situation, same offerings, same, virtually same everything. It's at a three-way, actually a four-way signalized intersection. What I'm more concerned about now is that this is not like actually been approved by the state, and I don't see how you're going to go north from your lot if you don't have a four-way signalized intersection.
Further comments from questions from the applicant? Joe?
I guess I'm on the fence. I make, I definitely share your frustration, there wasn't a huge difference. I do think it's a much better proposal, puts it in perspective. I do think the representative did answer a lot of our questions as far as, I guess I know.
I agree, yeah.
My question was trying to see a visual to compare it. I do like the fact that it's decluttering signs. I mean, that, there's a lot going on in that section. You know, I think it'd have to be a significant difference to continue it. I don't know if that would change the difference, whether it's tonight or next meeting, but I mean, I would definitely be all for hearing a proposal if it's a significant difference and a little more into compliance.
Okay.
Two cents.
Then, as a request from the applicant, again, we'll need four members to vote in the affirmative to continue the public hearing. I will make a motion to continue the public hearing to June... Twenty-seventh? Twenty-seventh at seven oh five PM? Seven, I'm sorry, seven o'clock. Is there a second?
I would second it.
That's Mr. Kelly, second it. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And one opposed. So we'll hear you in June twenty-seventh, and please come back with a significant change to the structure.
It will be the last time you see us on this, I promise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anything further, Allison? I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Thank you.